Call to order, this meeting of the Hamilton County Commission. This is our staff meeting, December 10th, 2019. We have two presentations today. The first one is a presentation from the folks from Green Umbrella regarding the 2030 District. So Elizabeth Rojas and I know Ollie Croner is here as well. So evidently you've got a PowerPoint for us, so please come forward. We're looking forward to your presentation. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you all very much. Can you hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you all very much. It's an honor to be here today and to share with you the 2030 District. So, Ollie Croner is here with the city. He is the Sustainability Coordinator with the city and he'll also be talking about why the city has joined the 2030 District. So, I thought I'd start with an overview of what a 2030 District is. So, we're a national organization made up of 22 cities across the country and one in Canada. And the goal of a 2030 District is to reduce the energy, the transportation, and the water within the district bounds by 50% by the year 2030. So that is why we exist. That's our national charge. So, in Cincinnati, though, we've also adopted a fourth goal, and that goal is to increase the occupant health. And the way a district works is we have buildings that voluntarily commit to reducing their energy, transportation, and water, and then we measure within a district boundary. And I'll get a little bit to that in just a moment. So what's really wonderful is that Hamilton County has already been doing some of these things very, very well, and specifically in the energy and water. We use Portfolio Manager, and that is a program that the county has already started, has been using for quite a while. I met with Holly and Ralph prior to this, so...
Let me just interrupt you for a second and say that Ralph is in the room, and so is Holly. So thank you all for being here as well. Thank you.
So, we actually report, so the buildings report their data for energy, water, transportation, and health. The county's already reporting via Portfolio Manager for the energy, and the baseline is set at a 2003 baseline. Water, you're already reporting in Portfolio Manager, and the baseline is in development. So we'll be working with Water Works for that baseline. I'm sorry, go back up. And then for transportation, we're probably looking at a short survey. So that survey would be administered to the building management, and then the occupants can report on things like if they're using public transportation, how long their commute is, if they are working from home certain days. So there's many ways to reach that, to get to those goals, and we're developing that survey right now, and as well as the baseline. And for the health, we're actually working with, if you are familiar with the WELL Building Standard, which is sort of like LEED for healthy occupants of buildings, that's the standard that we're working with to kind of capture some of those ideas and help the buildings get their occupants to have perhaps better water, more, better air quality. There's many different ways that we can achieve that, but that's in development as well. And so early on, we're asking all of the members to participate in actually helping us form those metrics in the ones that are not developed yet. So, let's see. So this is, as I mentioned, we actually measure. So within our boundary here, we have about a little over 6 million square feet. The county has five buildings that would actually fall within our boundary. But we, everyone is welcome, plus you, everyone is welcome to participate in regionally. We have a lot of square footage that has already been committed outside of the boundary. Pardon me, excuse me. So University of Cincinnati, Xavier, NKU have already committed, as well as a couple other organizations. Those are all our regional members. Within the boundary, we will actually be, that's where we'll be measuring. We'll be calculating how well we're doing as a district as compared to other districts across the nation. So as you can see, the county actually, you could commit any of your buildings or all of your buildings, and then the five that fall within the boundary would be part of that calculation. So I put this slide in here. This is Pittsburgh's success story, and they have been, they have a really very great program there. They've already reduced their energy by about 23% and their carbon CO2 emissions by 26% from the transportation. So they've actually been able to put this to a dollar amount, which I think is really powerful. That says a lot to our community, you know, about how these changes that are so necessary also have a dollar impact to our community. So these are the members that have signed on and committed their properties. So we have already, and I should mention, we are, we are part of Green Umbrella. We're an initiative of Green Umbrella, but we've only been in existence for just under a year. And the, it's really impressive how many organizations have been willing to come and talk with us and commit their properties. I think Cincinnati is really ready for this, and I think it tells such a wonderful story about how we're doing as a community and what we can do. So I'd like, Ollie, well, one more slide. We have our professional partners and our community partners also participate in a 2030 District, and they help bring the solutions to the members. So I'd like to have Ollie talk a little bit about why the city has joined, and...
Thank you, Elizabeth. Good afternoon. Ollie Croner, Sustainability Coordinator with the City of Cincinnati. My role is to look at climate change, how it will impact our residents, how it will impact core governmental services. I suspect you have noticed some uptick in extreme weather events, major storms, sewer backups, landslides, to the tune of over $50 million in damages to city government over the last two years. Most recently, the Columbia Parkway landslide essentially cost us police headquarters when we had to divert funds to accommodate a landslide. Part of my role is to look at where our carbon comes from, carbon emissions, which are driving many of these changes. And when we do our greenhouse gas modeling, it's clear that approximately a third of our emissions come from our large commercial buildings, members of this organization. What we also notice is that when we have prospective businesses coming to town, they ask about our sustainability initiatives. They ask what we're doing around clean energy, what we're doing around transit, what our sustainability practices look like. I suspect that you'd hear something similar from Hamilton County Development Corporation. And so this is really an opportunity to tell our sustainability story on a higher level, nice packaging, nice branding, join with other cities around the country to take the lead. And that's really what we're trying to do here, trying to lead by example while also recognizing that we don't necessarily have all the answers. So we noticed when Fifth Third went 100% renewable, first Fortune 500 in the country to do so. We noticed when Procter &amp; Gamble announces zero waste manufacturing. This is an opportunity to work together, learn from each other, tell our story on a higher level. I don't mean to speak out of turn, but would love to hold hands with the county in this effort.
For the record, Ollie is just making a mess behind the left turn, so we're going to take a little pause. There we go. He broke something.
So, anyway, I guess in closing, I second what Ollie says. I mean, it's such an honor to be here today, and to have Hamilton County really make this statement with the city and with 2030 sets a beautiful example for what our city can do. And, you know, I think that also celebrating all the good work that you've already done. You guys have really done some amazing things already with your buildings, and that's a great example because you have older building stock. And so, kind of helping our members learn about what can be done, as well as showcasing all of the initiatives that you are already doing, I think it's a great opportunity for us as a community to come together. So thank you very much for your time, and I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you. I just have a question, and we've got the staff that you've already met with, both Holly and Ralph Lenny, you said?
Yes.
I don't know if either one of you want to come forward. I am having a little bit of a hard time understanding what, other than developing the metrics and having a response from the county related to these four different areas, I'm wondering if then after that is established, there are best practices that then are recommended or we participate in. So Holly and Ralph, could you come forward, if that's appropriate, and just tell us what the interaction's been like and what you expect to have happen now?
Sure. I'll wait for Ralph to come up. Thank you for the question. So Ralph and I met with the 2030 District a few weeks ago, and we did talk about what are our responsibilities if we become a member. And as Elizabeth mentioned, one of those is to report our energy and water usage in our buildings. And as you heard, Ralph is already doing that, so there's no additional effort on our part. One of the benefits, though, in addition to being a partner with our downtown buildings, is we can then have, from my understanding, have events with the other members of the district, again, to learn more about ways we can improve already the great efforts that are going on here with our energy and water reduction. And of course, as Elizabeth mentioned, we'll also have the opportunity to provide input into the transportation and wellness activities that are still being developed. So really, it's more of, I see it more as a networking and educational opportunity as well, to learn from others.
Yes.
We've been, over 10 years, we've been doing energy conservation. We've been tracking for over 16 to 17 years in Energy Star Portfolio. Right now, based on the baseline that they're showing, we already are about 25 to 30% in reductions. We're getting ready to do energy conservation in our study, and we see some more reduction in electricity, natural gas, and water usage. We have really reduced our carbon footprint over that time period. All that data is available for them to use to make sure it looks better for the region. We have, right now, four of the buildings are Energy Star rated again this year in the downtown. The one that can't be is the Justice Center because there's no criteria. We do see how we stand on it. This also will allow me to learn from other people, my staff, some other things they've done. We also, though, have some things I think they can learn from in how to have good WELL Buildings, because we have gotten certified several years ago for operating through U.S. Green Building Council, one of the first ones in the state for LEED, O&amp;M. We chose not to recertify because of the cost of recertification, but we have changed our procedures and our policies. So this fits hand in hand with what we have done. This hand in hand is where they want to go. I think we can contribute to the region.
So, do you have any questions or comments?
Just going to make a couple of comments.
Okay. So, let me just say then that from my perspective, it sounds like a great idea and a good partnership. Some of the impacts that you talked about, our emergency management group deals with the overland flooding, and we've got MSD issues because of some of the weather events that we've had in this area. And so the impacts to the county are large, in addition to the impacts to the city. And we have kicked in for some of those landsides and trying to stabilize those hillsides in the city. And so I view us as a partner already in many of these efforts because we are suffering from some of the same impacts, and we've already started some of the work. So I was just wondering, but I will turn it over to you first, what, if there's any action you need from the board, what that action is. But before we get to that, let me turn it over to Vice President Dumas.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of comments. And Ralph, the standards that you list for Hamilton County and what you've been doing are very impressive. In addition, Green Umbrella does fantastic things. So just to be a part of that, it makes me know that it's going to be a very positive endeavor. And also, when we talk about our future, I mean, it sounds cliche, but we have to have this world a little better for the ones that are coming behind us. So I certainly embrace this idea of the 2030 District. I think we definitely need to do it and continue to do it for the ones that are coming behind us. So thank you so much for your work.
So it sounds like we've got unanimous support of the board to move forward. Do we need some action to move forward on this?
We were going to recommend bringing a resolution forth officially authorizing us to become members of the 2030 District.
Okay. All right. So we'll look for that then, within the next week or two. Yeah, we'll have a resolution in front of us. It sounds like we're going to pass that as soon as we have it. So thanks for bringing this forward. It's an exciting initiative, and, you know, I think we look forward to participating as the county. Jeff, do you have comments?
Yeah, just one quick comment, and I just want to note, not only the benefits of this from an environmental perspective, and the county has been active on multiple fronts in the past, and groups like this trying to share best practices environmentally. We were, I think, one of the founding members of, I don't think the group's around much anymore, but the Green Partnership for Greater Cincinnati, where we worked with the University of Cincinnati, Cincinnati Public Schools, City of Cincinnati, and Hamilton County to look at best practices. This is a much wider group and a much bigger group, so this is a fantastic effort. But I do want to just also say that while this isn't necessarily the focus of this program, but a lot of what Ralph has been able to do over the past 10 years as we continue to pull ourselves out of some budget and financial problems, has shown that you really can marry environmental improvements and sustainability with prudent financial and economic decisions. We, Ralph, I don't know the exact numbers, but all of the energy conservation and water conservation programs we did addressed tens of millions of dollars of deferred maintenance that we were unable to do, all for either keeping at the same level or reducing our operational spend based upon how we financed it. So just to say that there are ways in order to do this, people always say, "Well, we can't invest in environmental or sustainability, it's going to cost more." There's ways to do it where it doesn't, and Ralph Schop showed that.
Thank you. I have one quick question, a little bit more in the weeds. So when I look at the metrics, energy and water clearly are related to buildings. The transportation and health, are those related to the people working in the buildings?
It is.
Okay. So that kind of parses out.
Yes. So the transportation is intended to, for most of these buildings, they are office buildings, and it's intended to reduce the amount of CO2 emissions from them making their way to work.
Okay.
So that's where that reduction is aimed. For the health, we're looking at improving the health of the occupants of the building, which could come in the way of having building improvements or programs. So it could be access to, in some cases, fitness programs or healthy eating programs. So there's a lot of different variables that are on the table with that.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thanks for the clarity. All right. We'll look forward to keeping you in the loop as we pass our resolution.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming in. Good to see you.
Appreciate it.
Coincidentally, I had a conversation with one of our younger employees yesterday, and we were talking about a fitness facility in the building. So Jeff, that's something that, yeah, I was like, "What? What again?" So isn't that a great idea? So we'll talk later about that. Anyway, I think it's a great idea. Yeah, so...
We do have stairs.
We have stairs.
We do have stairs, and we have landings, and then we've got foyers. So anyway, all right, we'll talk about that later. I'm not putting anybody on the spot. All right. Our next item is Community Development Advisory Council Recommendations for Home Funds. Joy Pearson and Emily Carnahan are here, and it looks like Emily is going to start us off, so welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As you said, my name's Emily Carnahan. I'm a Program Manager in Community Development, and I'm presenting the 2019 Home Recommendations. So each year, we get our home allocation from HUD. In 2019, our grant is $1,339,817. We have a required CHODO set aside, that's Community Housing Development Organization, which is 15%, and then we have our 10% admin cost. You'll also see up there, prior year funds of $100,000. So last year, we awarded Working in Neighborhoods $200,000 for down payment assistance, and they have been unable to use a lot of those funds so far. So we had a couple of down payment assistance applications this year, so we decided to take back half of their award from last year and apply that to this year. So that is, comes to $1,150,000 to award. The pie chart on the right are our recommendations broken out of that, $1.15 million. And I will get to those in just a minute. Just an over, quick overview of our program. Since 2016, we have funded affordable housing developments through a competitive RFP process. This year, we issued one RFP for housing development projects and another RFP for down payment assistance projects. The minimum request is $50,000 and the maximum award is $300,000. All projects must serve low to moderate income households in our 40 participating jurisdictions. This coming year, we'll have 41 local municipalities participating. The one exception for that is we can fund special populations, for example, people experiencing homelessness in the city if the city also provides funding for that project. So both RFPs were released on September 16th. We had a question and answer session available to any potential applicant on September 25th, and then applications were due October 31st. We received six development proposals and two down payment assistance proposals. Staff reviewed all the proposals and did underwriting, and then our consultant with the National Development Council reviewed and approved the underwriting. The Community Development Advisory Committee, the CDAC, which is appointed by the county commissioners, met twice to review the applications, ask any questions, and then make these recommendations. The first one is HERC, the Homesteading and Urban Redevelopment Corporation, applied for four single-family homes in Lincoln Heights on Jackson Street. So that is, they applied for, and our recommendation is $200,000. MVAH, which was formerly Valentine Affordable Housing, they've applied for... MVAH, which was formerly Valentine Affordable Housing, they've applied for, and we're recommending funding for two projects. The first one is in Colrain Township. It's a multifamily for seniors. That recommended award is $290,000. And then there's a multifamily workforce housing in Wood Lawn for $300,000. CMHA's project is a redevelopment of Mariana Terrace, which is in Lincoln Heights. We're recommending an award of $210,000. Habitat for Humanity, their down payment assistance program, which would go towards new homeowners in Lincoln Heights and Springfield Township, we're recommending $50,000. And then the Home Ownership Center of Greater Cincinnati also applied for down payment assistance program. That would be countywide at $100,000. So you can see the total units of all those and the total project cost and the leverage. So all of those projects would increase our units countywide by 236. These are the two applications that we're not recommending for funding. Habitat for Humanity, they're, they applied for six single-family homes in Lincoln Heights for $300,000. And Talber House Model Group applied for a project in Rose Lawn. The Summit is Permanent Supportive Housing for $300,000. If you have any questions about those, I can answer those now, or I was going to do an overview of some of our past projects as well.
I have one quick question. On the page where you've listed out the units...
Yes.
I see the project costs are, you know, there's, there's a lot of variation here. And the grants, the county funds...
Yes.
In some cases are pretty significant, in other cases are a very small fraction. Tell us how you, you know, what the impact here is of these county funds relative to a $17 million project, right?
Happy to jump in.
Yeah, thank you.
That's a good question. The larger, the larger unit projects and the larger program cost projects are low-income housing tax credit projects. So for all of our projects, we have to do an analysis to make sure that the gap in financing is being funded appropriately. HUD will not let us oversubsidize a project. They also don't want us to undersubsidize a project because the pro forma will not work. So the smaller projects are single-family homes, and our maximum subsidy per unit is $50,000. That's a policy that was set about four years ago with your, with the commissioner's assistance and guidance. So the larger projects, we've also set the maximum at $300,000 in order, in order to leverage our funds as much as possible. The projects we received this year, the applications, include a new low-income housing tax credit developer, which is MVAH. They're one of the largest tax credit developers in the country, and one thing that sets them apart is they never sell their properties. So they're not only based in Hamilton County, but they also maintain ownership for the entire affordability period for the light tech projects. And the way that the proposals are scored are based on $1 million and less, and then $1 million and $1 and higher with separate criteria. So we're not mixing apples and oranges as far as the competition and the criteria scoring.
Okay.
And then the down payment assistance, RFP, had a separate scoring rubric, rubric as well.
Okay. And then just one more question related to the down payment assistance. Is, I see the two entities are receiving that, is, now it's escaping the folks in South...
Working in Neighborhoods.
Working in Neighborhoods, yeah. So are, were they unable to spend the funds because they didn't have the requests coming in for the funds?
There were a couple of things that happened, and we had conversations with them, and they agreed to reducing the funds. We didn't want to lose the funding. So one, one misconception or miscommunication early on was that the funds could not be layered with other down payment assistance programs, so that was corrected. This is the first time they've done down payment assistance outside of the city of Cincinnati, and that they, so initially, we had the, the problem of not understanding we could go along with the banks, not, the banks' down payment assistance programs as well, so that there'd be more, more subsidy going to the community, to the homeowner. But the other piece that they just discovered about two weeks ago was that the ratios that were used for the maximum amount of money that the bank will allow somebody to spend on, as a portion of their income, had changed. Originally, it was 30% of maximum for housing and 40% for all indebtedness, and it was changed to 35% and 45%. And the banks did not communicate that to when. So they were not able to use the funding along with their loan products, but they didn't tell that to Working in Neighborhoods. So we changed our, our contract, amended it to say that whatever the banks are allowing, that's what we will use. It's not based on the proposal when you sent it to us. So over the course of the next eight months, is what their contract runs until June, they felt that they could spend the $100,000 comfortably. And it's coupled with some funding from block grant to do the down payment, to do the homeownership and financial literacy counseling. And we also have some meetings set up with the Board of Realtors and some other nonprofit groups to get the word out, and we are, we will be holding the, they will be holding the classes out in the, out in the community outside of their neighborhood, or their, their office location. So we're hopeful that that will help to create more interest, and then next year, they can apply for additional funding. We just wanted to make sure we get the money out the door as soon as possible.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam President. Just two comments. Your advertisement, I've asked that before, how do you advertise for the RFP since it was such a low number that applied?
Oh, we had $2.2 million in ask, and that was the first time we've had almost double the ask in money than what we had, so...
I mean, the number of people that applied.
Well, that was also the highest number we've had. So the home program has been around for 27 years. The reason I can remember is it was created when my daughter was born, so I can always remember, and I was working in DC at the time. So we, for 23 years, did not fund housing development projects or down payment assistance. We used the funding primarily for rental assistance. So for the last four years, we've been pounding the pavement and trying to get developers to know, come to us, we have funding, nonprofits come to us. Last year, we had to go out with two rounds of funding. So we were so excited to have a decision, have really strong projects, have new developers here applying for the funding and, and throughout the community, so in Colrain and in Wood Lawn and Lincoln Heights, and so we're happy to see the diversity. We also will be working with communities to develop their own housing plans as an outgrowth from the community-wide housing strategy that's under development and nearly complete, so that we can go and solicit and ask specifically for the kind of housing needs. That could include homeowner low-interest loans or grants, also using these home funds. So we're, housing is our next frontier for the next five years to really make an impact and make a difference. Instead of just soliciting with our legal ad, we also, we obviously reach out to affordable housing advocates, every developer that's ever applied, every nonprofit that's ever applied, and we ask people to spread the word. So like I said, we're, we're 23 years behind the curve, but in four years, we've really come up and running, and we're really, really pleased with the, the demand that we had.
Thank you.
Yes.
And the diversity of allocation, I was really happy to see, too. One other comment, as, as we look at the administrative costs, $133,000, is that us? Who is, who is included in that?
The $133,000 is the 10% set aside for administration, and that is used in a wide variety of ways. Some of it is for staffing, and that's not just the community development staff. There, we have four people right now in community development, and we charge our time and allocate with our time sheets based on the amount of time we spend on home-funded projects. But we also have that funding for training, for conferences. We use it for community housing development organizations that are, people are, organizations that are considering becoming CHodos, including Lydia's House, and we work with the Greater Northbrook to provide them with training and strategic planning. We were hoping that one or both of them would become a new CHODO, but that has not come to fruition. They both decided to wait for a little bit. So within that $133,000, we have a lot of flexibility for the, the needs that we have. In the past, the funding has also been provided to the winter shelter. This year, the funding is being used for Maslow's Army for some capacity building at the direction of the commissioners. So it's, it's very, I would say about 50/50. And the other staff that are included are the administrative staff of our department, so the people that pay our bills, the HR, folks that handle our HR, my bosses, you know, James Noyes, and our IT staff and et cetera, about 12 people altogether, funded with home and community development, block grant admin funds.
Thank you so much. And I just thought the summary, as I read through it earlier before I even came in, it was just awesome, this specificity of what you're doing and how you're trying to leverage the money. I thought it was a great summary, so thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and I just want to reiterate that this is kind of a new frontier for the commission, and I know you voiced the same kind of interest in looking into housing challenges in Hamilton County. A study is being concluded right now, by the end of the year at least, and so we'll be interested to see the results of that and take a more active, you know, role really when it comes to housing issues related to the whole county, but especially the folks that live outside the city, because the city is a little bit ahead of us here, and we just haven't done much in that space previously. So hats off to staff and administration for helping guide all of the work that we're doing by way of housing and, and, you know, home.
Let me just jump in. We did extend the deadline, we being the steering committee for the community-wide housing strategy, mostly to have more engagement with the 46, 47 local governments outside of the city of Cincinnati. So we will, we'll be presenting something to you in February, rather than the end of the year. We have a working draft right now.
Okay.
But I want to let you know. And then there is a summit being planned in, in March for the City of Cincinnati with Neighborhood Summit, and I'll share some details with you about a summit in April for the communities outside of the city where this will be presented as a keynote at lunch.
Very good.
We'll share that information later.
Sounds like another shared services summit, so, all right, very good. Well, thank you. Thank you for the report. Appreciate it. And we need no action on this, right, Jeff? We've already taken action on this.
Yeah, so you're taking action through the initial resolution that you passed on the consolidated plan and providing me with the authority to sign off on grants associated with this.
Okay, great. Thank you. Is there anything else for the good of the cause?
I have nothing.
All right, very good. Oh, I'm sorry, I should have excused Commissioner Porteen from the meeting. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else, Jackie? All right, we're good. I'm going to move that we adjourn.
Second.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you.